Stuart is just really quiet in here. No one's talking. So that's what your headphones are working though.
Sorry about that. Mel, are you lining up and running?
Yes, ready whenever you guys are.
We'll give it a minute. Good evening, everybody. My clocks on my phone and on my machine show that it is five thirty P M. And that being said, we will call a city council meeting of May twenty fifth to order via Zoom. I don't know why the agenda says there's a public hearing because there is no public hearing tonight. That must not have been taken off from the last one unless I'm missing something. Tom. You shaking his head? No. So that tells me that.
I don't think there is one.
No, it just didn't get removed off the agenda, off the agenda format. So next thing up on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the May fourth meeting, which you all have in front of you.
I move if they be approved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman D and a second from, I believe that was Councilman Merja.
Yep.
Yep.
Are there any changes or additions to those minutes, gentlemen? Questions from the public? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as approved. Who's leaving the state? Anybody?
I'm not leaving the state, but I will be out of town. Still in Montana, but from the with the seventeenth to the twenty sixth, I'll be fairly remote camping, so it might be hard to reach.
Okay. Um. Just so you know, you're going to be on call Friday because I'll be.
No problem.
Recouping. So I'm gonna have surgery on Thursday. Hopefully they do it robotically and then I can be have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday to recoup but back out at Tuesday.
Oh, wishing the best.
Thank you. We have no old business, new business. You have the claims in front of you tonight, gentlemen. Any questions on the claims tonight?
I move approval of the claims.
Second.
I have a motion for Councilman D, a second from, I believe that was Councilman Howard.
Yep.
The largest claim on there you can see is for the fireworks for the Fourth of July.
Yep.
Other than that, nothing's out of the ordinary.
Yeah. Quick question on that. So did, did our insurance change? Quite a bit on that, or did that not end up happening? There was some talk, I think, last year about insurance. Possibly going forward would be. Hesitate to use the word ridiculous, but I'll use it.
I've heard nothing on a change on the insurance or any additional paperwork or requirements needed other than what we've had in the past.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the claims? Hear none? Those in favor paying the bills?
Hi.
Any opposed? Nope. The next stack of paper you have, gentlemen, and Mel, you've got in front of you are our reports. Starting with the sheriff's report. One citation, eight traffic stops, one arrest made, a sixty seven calls within the Shoto city limits. Ranging from traffic accidents, traffic stopped, officers request another calls. That doesn't include anything that's just, you know, within the donut around town. So I want to thank thirty one eight for getting his reports to me. He's fairly good about that. Questions from the chef's report? Next one would be the city court. Two criminal cases, two misdemeanors, four cases filed, three were city cases. So you can see what the cases were on the other side or what the one of the charges were on the thing. This is from April. And everybody's reports are now current and up to date, just so you know. Moving on, the next page, you've got civil city attorney. And you'll notice that the largest portion on there was he sat down with Jody, Tom and I, and we went through the report back from the, from the company that used to be. What was the name of the company that did our codes? Sterling. And they had gone through all of our codes and updated them and brought back things that had conflicts with federal or other types or state laws. And so we went through, reviewed those, decided what we wanted to do and address the letter back to them, letting them know to go forward. Once we get them back, we will have them open up to the public and let them take a peek at what's going on, what's changes were made, you know, what was removed, things along those lines, because there'll be public hearings that are gonna take place as well as far as some, as that stuff is concerned. Any other questions on Jeff's bill?
Councilman Merja is trying to speak, but I think he doesn't know he's on mute.
Yeah, I was muted. Um, so we migrated everything away from Sterling though, did we not?
It's now, yeah, it's now with editorial research is the company that's doing them.
Okay, that's what I thought. Because last time I went to Sterling looking for them, they weren't there. And then I went back and read my emails.
I think there was a buyout, Councilman Merja, to tell you the truth.
Oh, okay.
So next page would be the civil or the criminal. And this is dating back to July of last year. You can see case load up to this date. Questions on Jennifer's report? Say attorney Stutz? No? Now we get to the meat and potatoes. We get to Mike. Again, as he says, our influence flows remain the lowest and best we've experienced in quite a while. It's very, very satisfying to see this and know that things are going well, and we'll come back to that in a few minutes and discuss part of the reason why things are going well out that way. But over the last four years, eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty one to date, you can see where we're sitting at. And we are well below where we have been in the past and that's a good thing. We did see a bump up in our COVID in our wastewater for a while, but I believe our last test results should be back this week and we'll have a better idea where we're sitting at on that. Wastewater treatment plant is treating water very well. You can see where we're at on our removals. The entire wastewater collection system has been jetted and cleaned. On the water delivery side, all of our water tests have come back good. We sit around the Rica pump for the duration of fire during the April twentieth fire at the Gunther Apartments. Pumping around three hundred thousand gallons. Tank levels dropped a little bit at the onset, but recovered about an hour and a half in and the tanks were fully, were full by the end of the fire. No significant water repairs since our last report, and we have assisted with a couple of service line replacements. All two hundred and forty five water system valves in the city have been exercised and inventoried, and we do have several that need to be replaced, and they're in the process of doing that. Similarly speaking, they exercise and tested all one hundred and twenty fire hydrants and tested flow and pressure on them, and they are now mapped, G I S and printed, and the fire department has a copy of that map on the wall showing each fire hydrant and gallons per minute and the pressure they're capable of pumping. We're getting ready to install a new radio system and, and P L C for the water systems because our copper lines that feed the telephone system are going to be removed by Three Rivers because they're antiquated. So we're stepping up and going to a radio system. You can see that daily pumping rates have gone up and as Mike says, you can see the asterisks down there, the increase in pumping rates may be due to warmer weather and people were running the irrigation systems. Or there's a possibility that with all the pumping we did during the Gunther fire, we may have sprouted a new leak. And it's just, yes, just yet to surface. So we could see where it's at. So we'll have a better idea possibly as we get into this month as to what pumps doing. Our water loss is still high. We're still losing over fifty percent of the water we pump. So I know that. Started our milling in preparation for chip sealing, started patching some pass holes, patch potholes. And I don't think they did a little bit of plowing, but not a whole lot over the weekend because the snow was so heavy. They removed tree twelve ash trees as part of the D N R C grant to mitigate the effects of Emerald Ash Boreers and we planted new trees. They included Norway maple, honey locust, buckeye, linden, cottonless cottonwoods and elm trees. The Buckeyes are kind of a cool looking tree, if you ask me. They're kind of funky the way they grow their little things. And as you said, a normal mix of everyday tasks, water shut offs, water remeder repairs, water sampling, wastewater sampling, garbage collection, tree trimming, location requests and service line issues and mechanical repairs. Next one to the zonings are, this is from zoning administrator, Tom. You can see these are the current applications on that we've got processed. That doesn't mean that there's not more on file or in the process of being worked on, correct, Tom?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions on the building permits zoning? And then last, but last pages are from the member's security safekeeping services joint custody receipts. What this indicates to us is that our dollars in the bank are fully insured. And we're required to present this monthly as part of our auditors to make sure it gets out in the public. Questions on any of those reports before we head into you guys, Councilman? Mel?
Chris, this is Levi. On the, on the COVID test that I pulled and sent off last Monday, got the results back last Wednesday, and that's the most recent one I did, and the numbers are substantially down. I don't remember right off the top of my head what they were, but they are down.
Thank you. I figured they would be just looking at what's taking place out in the public, but I'm glad to know that. Thank you, Levi.
You betcha.
And while Levi's on the line, I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to him and winning his award at the Montana Rural Water Users Convention last week. I wish I'd have known you were going to win it, so I could have been there, but the secrecy that it was better than American Idol, because I had no idea. So congratulations, Levi. You make that process out there work so much smoother and so much easier. And I'll be honest, since I've become the mayor, I've yet to go out there because I've had no reason to.
Well, thank you, Chris. I do appreciate that.
Keep on keeping on there, young man. We appreciate you greatly.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Howard, you look prepared.
For what?
By a report for me?
Um. No, I thought you were talking with the chief all day. Um. Just this past week, we had two fire calls in town for structure and we had, I think, at least two, maybe three for power line problems with the wind and the snow. And prior to that, I don't remember because I was out of state for three weeks.
No, we got everything's caught up to that. It's fine. We had the incident over on the northeast side of town and the structure fire there the other morning, and that was the one. I actually went over that way because I knew on that part of town, we have some issues with water lines. I tried to call Mike, but his phone was silenced. And I felt if someone's gonna have to go wake Mike up at two thirty in the morning, it better be me rather than a chef's deputy knocking on his door to so I went over and you guys had it under control and had plenty of water pumping from what I.
Yeah, we tried to use minimal amount of water on that one, but we got it knocked down pretty quick, but it did flare up again six or eight hours later, I guess, up in the attic. So.
Yeah, and I felt bad. That homeowner had no insurance on that facility, on that house. So. Anything else from the city council standpoint? Any reports from your neighborhood there, Mr. Howard? You want to pass along?
Um, I haven't had any residents call me with anything.
Perfect. It's been kind of quiet on your side of town. I want to get that back.
I guess I'm gonna throw this one out there. As far as the bigger trucks coming through this end of town with the Spring Creek Bridge down and whatnot. Some little driving around has been happening and I guess, you know, I don't know, we've got some rules, but I think we need to be a little bit lenient until this bridge thing is fixed and the traffic I've been witnessing here is slowed down. I mean, I don't think it's ever been real fast, but they're driving real slow and I think it's just, we need to work with them.
Are you talking about on our streets or on the Dunn Highway?
Our streets.
I'm with you. I understand that. And if you and I want to go sit down and talk to those guys and let them know, we're okay with that for the time being until we get a long term solution. I have no heartburn with that either, Steve.
Okay. I think they might appreciate just knowing it.
It may be a very good gesture to throw out to them. Yeah, no doubt about it.
Yeah, you know, there's there's too many residents out here listening on the Zoom thing, but you know, they're I hope that they understand too. It's kind of a you know, it's a business. I mean, I kind of have mixed feelings on it. It's like, you know, if you don't want them driving through town, I guess we're not gonna let them go pour new concrete slabs in either, are we? It's kind of, you know, catch twenty two.
It is.
We all need to get along. But yeah, it might be worth going and talking to them and.
You tell me what your schedule looks like and we'll hook up and I'll meet you over there. I have no heartburn with that whatsoever. And I agree, it'd be a nice solid branch, probably.
Yeah, I'm pretty booked up until Friday anyway.
And then I'm booked up till Tuesday, so know that.
Wow, that's right. Okay.
Okay.
So maybe we'll try it next week or if I get home late, I can always go over and talk to them. So.
Okay, let them know that we're on board.
Okay.
Councilman D, you were gonna say something?
I was just, I think I'm following along. I'm tracking now. I was just hoping that you guys might elaborate a little bit more about what you're talking about. I think I'm tracking now.
I'll come right out and say it. It's, you know, R S I is kind of under, under the gun. You know, they're they're a business that's been around here forever and they've been set up where they are forever. And, you know, they have to operate. You can't just have one way to, to leave town and you know, it just doesn't make sense to go up that hill with a heavy load to turn around and come back down the hill on the other side of town.
With justice heavy allowed.
Yeah, to go a mile north of Shoto. You know, a mile north of Shoto is now a four mile route for them or something like that.
It's like a NASCAR race. It's all right hand turns, right hand turn, right hand turn, right hand turn. And yeah, so no, I agree.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Councilman D, let's go to you while you're out.
Well, let's see. Chamber of Commerce is planning a open board. You know, no, no stops pulled, uh, Fourth of July. We are having Brew Fest. We're having our steak fry. It sounds like there might be keg hockey from what I hear as rumors say. We're doing our parade. All of the above, everything that's we normally see in a Fourth of July, we're, we're doing it all. We're, we're pretty excited about that across the board. So that's a big thing from Chamber. I think I saw that the pool is filled and Lions Club is gearing up for a season here pretty quickly. I know Drew's got her, her lifeguards going through training and getting that wrapped up and should be some information about when that all will open up here pretty quick. Yeah, those are the big highlights right now.
Um, Boy Scouts last weekend.
Oh, yeah, of course. We had the troop one from Great Falls in town. We were trying to get the whole district, the whole tri-county area, Teton, Shoto County and Cascade County, all the troops from around there up here. It didn't end up working out, but troop one came and valiantly camped out in the snow and, and in bear country. And they, they were, they had a really good time and on behalf of me, and I just want to say this publicly to Mike and his crew, that a big thank you for helping getting garbage picked up on a Saturday at the pavilion. Was really appreciated to make sure we just had a clean area and keep it kind of bear sanitized. It was a, they were really pleased with, with Shoto and camping in Shoto.
And this is a troop that camps twelve months out of the year. Once a month, you calendar year, they go out and camp.
At least once a month.
Yeah. Hardy souls, those young men were. Anything else for us, Councilman D? Councilman Boja, it's roll to you.
Uh, well, I'm glad none of the, the scouts got eaten by the bear. She must have, I don't know if, if they just smelled like teenage boys or what.
Smell them a mile away, I'm sure.
I know, I know the last anybody saw her, she was headed that direction. So I'm really glad that no interaction happened there. Um. I did have something and now I don't remember what it was.
Come back to me if you have to, Stuart.
Yeah, I will. Um. No, I lost it. I'll probably send out an email if I remember. I should have written it down.
Okay. Councilman Major?
Yes, just two items. One is, as usual, I'm asking about, have we heard any update on the railroad crossing? On First Street North, well, you know, right by Rex's.
I've heard that it's still on, it's on their radar, but as weather changes and pinned upon washouts and things like that in other parts, who knows?
But they haven't given us a date or anything.
Not giving us a hard date, but they will give us a hard date because they've asked for our help with our back truck to clean out the stuff and things like that. So we'll.
Heads up. Are they planning on doing concrete there?
That I do not know.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I'd like to see those fixed and fixed for the long term and not just for like six months, but that's fine. I know we're sort of limited in what we can do. The other item is maybe more something you're gonna talk about, but that was just working with you to find an avenue for the urban decay. It sounds like we, we might have a breakthrough there and be able to find some ground to go forward.
I think we can and our city attorney is wrapping his head around it to figure out the best way to do it. Looking at a nuisance ordinance that's in the city of Great Falls that would allow for two different options for, for nuisance issue to either issue a citation and go to city court or issue a summons and bring them to the city commission and go through a hearing that way and let the commission look at the issue and decide what they want to do and ultimately rather than a court issue a a sentence or a fine, the commission would have that option. So.
Thank you for that. Thank you for finding that.
Yeah, he said it'd take him a little while to wrap his brain around it and then he'll get it, get it up to us with some verbiage to take a peek at and see what we want to do.
I just wanted to make sure that the public knew and the council knew that it was something that's still high on my list.
Oh, it's high on everybody's list. And we just, we're, we're trying to find a politically correct, I shouldn't say politically correct, an acceptable way of doing it. That's not, yeah. That can't be deemed as being retaliatory or indiscriminate when it comes to it.
Yep, no, I understand. So.
We're not picking one person to pick on. It's gonna be across the board. So.
Universal, and they've got avenues to, to represent themselves. So that's good. Thank you for that. That's, those were the two items I had.
Councilman D, I'm swinging back to you.
I think Councilman Merja remembered his thing.
Oh, did he?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, there you are in the chats. Go, Councilman Merja.
Uh, so it's, it's actually two things. I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the railroad crossings because I was given a little bit of purview, but the thing I remember before I forget again, the resident who did lose his home that wasn't insured, there is a benefit account set up at First Bank. There is also, I was just talking to Carson Query today, and there's probably furniture et cetera, that isn't going to be used by the Gunther folks. So he could probably go through that. I was also given almost thirty bags of clothes that we're slowly going through, but if he's in need, we could make it a priority and probably get it done this week. So I don't know if anybody's in contact with him or not, but have him contact Carson Query about furniture and maybe have him get ahold of me if he needs clothing and I'll see what we've got.
I will run down to the senior senator tomorrow and let him know that.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is on the railroad crossings, what little I know is everything for them is sitting there. And their hope was to have it in before Fourth of July, but like you said, Chris, depends on washouts, it depends on weather, et cetera. And I believe Mark addressing your thing about concrete. Pretty sure that's what's sitting there south of the railroad ties and the rails is those are concrete crossings that will go on top of. And instead of pouring the concrete, they put those in so they can pull them up and replace the ties as they need to. Concrete crossings like the one out at the game check station are really, really expensive because everything underneath them has to be permanent. So I believe what's sitting there, the plan, at least when, when I was talking to the railroad was something not as permanent. So maintenance could be done on it. And that's what I know.
Thank you, sir. Great. Appreciate the heads up on that one. Um, from the mayor's desk, you guys have a list of some correspondence, the letter there from Governor G F fourteen, letting us know that we received our Montana coal endowment program. Award, grand award for six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, and that was for our water line replacement system. This is going towards that project. And you'll notice that they have changed the name from the Treasure State Endowment to the Coal Montana Coal Endowment Program so that people understand that these dollars are coming from coal revenue and not just from a regular, another type of entity. They want coal in it. So I was pleased to know that. Along those lines, our wastewater P E R has cleared the thirty day public comment period for wastewater and D E Q has cleared it with zero comments on it that showed up today. So that is back on the desk and we should receive our funding from that very, very soon. And I'll come back to that for our, our meetings in, in June. Thank you, letter from the Girl Scouts. Uh, thank you letter from the Girl Scouts. Uh, thank you letter from the Labah family. And the Labah family had some funds left over and they are going to put together a bench for the mini park. Uh, they're trying to decide if it's going to be a concrete bench or if they'll do a wooden bench on a concrete thing, but they are going to put a bench in over at the city, at the mini park. Other one is, uh, from Northwestern Energy. And I bought those guys dinner the night of the Gunther fire and somehow it made it up the food chain. But those guys deserved it. They had a long day of waiting around dealing with power lines and gas line potentialists and stuff like that. Just a small way for us to say thank, or for me to say thank you. So, uh, got our final copy of our audit back from our auditor. It's on file at the city. We went over this a while back. The one finding we had was, we discussed and that's there. There's a letter from Kelly Service, um, asking for some cooperation and a better understanding of some things. And I will address it with Tim and I'll put it in writing, but um, and I'll let you guys know that we've always, as far as I've known and went back to Jack and, and Dan was we need parts. We gotta get parts from Napa. Rod's the guy who was on call. So we have to get parts in the middle of the night. We had to call Rod. We gotta go plow them out. So we've been proactive and plowing them out when they're out running around rather than wait to have to go do it at the last minute. Um, similarly speaking, being responsible for the roads within the city of Shoto, we take care of the roads to the Shoto activities in and around the hospital, the Beehive Home at the request of the ambulance so that they have access to get in there, get turned around. Especially the activities home at the bottom of Country Club Hill. So there are times when, yeah, we're probably out there doing something that could be done by a private individual. But we're doing it at the behest of, uh, emergency services and so on. So and we're on call twenty-four seven for them. Uh, we'll go through and I'll deal with the issue about them, uh, the other, uh, item on here about cleaning out at the coffee shop. So I'm not, we'll get to the bottom of it. I appreciate Tim writing this letter. Um, it does, it gives us an opportunity to know what's going on and talk about it and get it out there as to what's truly taking place. Okay? Um, thankfully by previously, and I want to let you guys know that Mike was a finalist for the, uh, Public Works Director of the Year as well. He was one of three finalists this year. He was not successful. Uh, gentleman from Malta won it, but for Mike to make it to the final three was, I thought, very, very, speaks very highly of him and I expect to see him up there next year as well. So I also provided you guys with a copy of our charter. And in our charter, I highlighted everybody's job descriptions. And the reason I did this is part of it is on me, part of it's on you guys. We have to remember to stay in our lanes. We are not zoning administrators. We are not, we are elected officials with a specific set of rules which we're to follow. The fact that we're elected officials doesn't give us carte blanche to any other additional information than the public should be entitled to. But we get an awful lot of people that come into City Hall when I'm there and they're like, well, I was told I could do this by so-and-so. Well, you can't do this. There are guidelines by which you have to do it. So if someone asks us a question of whether it be about zoning, whether it be about codes, whether it be about sidewalks and stuff, make sure it goes to the right person. And let that right person get in touch with that, with the person answering the question. Let them answer the question. And then if the public has a, a, a question concerning that answer or doesn't like that answer, then they can come through the proper channels to us. But it's so much easier to let the people at City Hall and Public Works do their job than it is for us to sit there and have to fix an answer when somebody comes in and says, I can do this when they can't do it. So I, I want people to know that when the reports come out, if there's something on a report that you, that's not there that you think yours should have been there, then it's, now's the time to ask. Don't call up and say, hey, so-and-so doing this, are they permitted? Let them do their job. Let them, let the process work and then we'll come back. If they're not permitted properly, we'll find out about it because we are out and about, whether it's Tom, whether it's crew, we get updates daily, what's taking place in town. And we'll get to them. And if it's, the, our codes are now updated, our, our processes are updated so that if they're not properly permitted, we have some recourse. So I would rather let the process work itself out than drive the city hall staff up the wall, jumping back and forth playing whack-a-mole. So um, that being said, well, I have nothing else for us tonight, but I know that we have three Mondays in or three Tuesdays in June. I need to find my calendar. We have the first, the eighth, the fifteenth, the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth. So what I would like to do is plan on keeping our regular schedule of first and third, so we go one fifteen. Knowing we may have to have another meeting in the month of June. As soon as RD gets us our dollars so that we can turn around and get them approved. And, um, ready to be taken care of and go to bed. That being said, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday. We will go, you know, as we get information, we'll do what we're required to, to get it posted. Get it noticed and go from there. Um, when it comes to our meetings, you guys, we have to do a better job of letting me know. I mean, yes, granted, I get the high school, the school calendar. I had no idea last Tuesday was, uh, a concert. But I had my calendar for three weeks and had I looked, we wouldn't have posted a meeting. We wouldn't have, you know, we wouldn't have done it. We would have changed that meeting rather than post it and then have to get online and host for five minutes and say this meeting's been moved. So just be aware. Take a look at your schedules and if some, if there's a conflict, let us know before we post it. Cause it's so much easier to change it before than it is after we get it posted at the post office, the city hall and up at the, uh, courthouse. Anything else before we let me go for the night? Knowing we'll meet next Tuesday on the first, uh, six thirty via Zoom.
A quick announcement, if you don't mind.
Go have, have that a Councilman D.
This is a more personal than city council announcement, um, but Sandra and I are expecting, um, we're having a baby in November. So we're really excited about that and um, yeah, so just some exciting news.
Congratulations to the Doiocuses.
Thank you.
Have another Greek and show.
That's right.
Big weekend in town, folks. Memorial Day week, or yeah, Memorial Day weekend, graduation weekend.
Ice cream shops opening.
Ice cream shops opening up on Monday. Uh, visitor center.
Yes, I should hope to have it open by Friday.
Okay.
At least for the bathroom visitor or the volunteers will come later.
Okay, um, Brooke DeRosa would like to talk to you guys about any help she may be offer to take care of closing up at night and things along those lines over there.
Okay.
Um, graduation, very, very proud of our graduates for Bulldogs. Uh, state softball this weekend for the Cow Dogs, I believe are heading to Florence and state track is also this weekend in Laurel. Good luck Bulldogs. Hurry back for your graduation seniors. Other than that, um, I'll be at City Hall tomorrow and Thursday morning and I'll be back in Tuesday. But we'll go a week from tonight on the first, uh, six thirty via Zoom. Anything out there from public comment? Mel? I see we had Robert Herzog earlier, but we lost him. So hearing no other public comment, you guys have a good evening. And, uh, we'll get hooked up next week. Thanks all.